I'm going to call the Alphamary School Board meeting to order. It's Monday, November 28th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And we're meeting in Susan Tully-Lightley Boardroom of the 1887 Building. Can you have roll call?
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayhart?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Joe Donald?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
We have a form and I'm going to submit a community husband notice for state statutes.
Correct.
Getting set up. Community participation, do we have anyone attending that's not part of the agenda? All right, we're going to discuss with reading that all those who have any correspondence.
I do have this.
Then we're going to go on to our high school presentation, so endeavor up.
I'm Hannah, I'm Eddie.
I didn't say serious, but it's anything that's here.
These are some members of our Hope Squad, right? So Caitlin, I'm a social worker at the high school, so I'm one of the Hope Squad advisors. And these are a handful of our wonderful members. And so I am hoping that they could share a little bit about what Hope Squad is for those of you who don't know. And if you guys have questions or anything like that, hopefully we can answer those. So I'm going to be explaining what Hope Squad is, what is Hope Squad about?
Okay, so Hope Squad is like an anti-suicide prevention program that we have in high school and middle school. We work, a lot of the students at our school will come to us to talk about like what they have or just even if they want to talk about what their day is. We have people that'll sit in at lunch that they can go talk to. We have meetings every other Friday or something in between. That's about it.
How, how did you guys become a part of Hope Squad?
So at the end of each year, there's a form that everyone gets sent out. And you pick at least two people that you would like to be on Hope Squad. And so you pretty much get voted on by your peers.
It's really important, we stress that people that vote are voting, don't just vote for their friends. It's people that they feel comfortable talking to, people that are supportive, that don't engage in bullying behavior, things like that. So it's a really big honor to be nominated because it shows that you're someone that your peers really trust.
So Jesus, he's new to Hope Squad this year, he just got on, what, a week ago, two weeks ago? But Jesus, why did you want to be a part of the squad?
Really, I just liked the idea. I believe that Hope Squad is the little encouragement that students need sometimes. Sometimes when you're out for a run or something like that, most people like to have partners. Why? That is simply because everyone needs a little push in now. It's funny to say, hey, this is what we have for you, instead of this is what you can do for yourself. So that is why I joined Hope Squad.
And Anthony, what about the Brat Hut that we just had a couple of years ago?
Oh yeah, the Brat Hut. We raised over a thousand dollars in donations on its own, yeah. Oh yeah, donations on its own.
Oh, 500 in donations, that's just.
Yeah. Kind of 50/50 on the donations. The Brat Hut, I've worked it before through like church and all of that type of stuff. But I found it just really enjoying to be working with my peers. And also occasionally you'd see, oh, your aunt, you'd drive by and say, hey.
Anthony, what did you do different while you were in the Brat Hut?
Oh yeah, I got a couple of the other people, we went out to the corner over by the four-way intersection with stoplights and made a little poster and started waving it out saying, hey, go to the Brat Hut.
Cause brought in a lot more people. It did, did, people are just handing in money. Pretty good. Hannah, what about in May, what did we do last May and we're going to do it this May?
So last May, we had, for about two hours, we had a mental health day where there were a bunch of different activities that we had and each person could pick two. And we brought in some people not from the community as well. And we're going to do it again, like Sander said, but a lot of kids liked it because we had school and then you could, you could have a break and you could just pick whatever you wanted to do that we had the options for.
That was something that came up from students in the Hope Squad, actually proposed and made it happen.
So what type of speakers did you have?
A lot of them were more so just like activities for us to do, so to give us kind of a break in our day. I know a lot of students liked it because not a lot of us students like to get a break between sports and homework and even just simply home life. So usually a lot of us have a lot going on, so to get a little break in our day. I like just doing the activities, just to kind of get a go.
What kind of activities do you remember?
They, I remember they had Just Dance, which personally.
We had yoga, we had, I taught kickboxing, we had kickboxing.
There was cake decorating.
She said she did baking.
Yeah.
Big cookies.
Coloring.
Droning, reading.
Walking club, there was walking.
Yep.
They had kickball.
Soccer.
Didn't they have a nap one at most?
They did have a nap. That was cool. And we have to put a limit on that.
So how many people or students are in Hope Squad this year? I imagine it can change from year to year.
There's about 37 kids this year. Is that just at the high school because there's Hope Squad at middle school?
Yes. Yeah, so those numbers are just at the high school, at the middle school level, we have 18.
Okay.
Starts on.
How do you guys make yourselves known, like who the people are in Hope Squad, other than wearing t-shirts and stuff like that?
So what we've done lately is we used to put out pictures in lockers, on other lockers and say, hey, this is who's in Hope Squad.
Okay, that's a great idea.
Because a lot of people.
Yeah, exactly. So yeah, I just wondered how students found you if they needed to talk to someone.
We have a bulletin board with all of their names and grade levels. And then in our weekly announcements on Mondays, there's also a link to that, those pictures. But a student came up with putting, also new to the Hope Squad, he wanted to put signs on lockers.
Yeah.
So we just laminated those and put them out.
I love that idea.
On the lockers now.
That's great. So what does Hope Squad look like at the middle school and at all high school?
I'm an advisor at the middle school also, so I can speak to that a little bit. So seventh and eighth graders are nominated, we do our, at the beginning of the year. And then sixth grade, we do in January because you don't really know each other so well yet, coming from a few different schools. And so then we get that up and running usually by February. So yeah, there's 18 total. And then it's really similar to the high school where we have about two meetings a month. We partner on a lot of things, which this year has been really great. We did a retreat in September, no, sorry, October, like first or second week of October at Monterey Dell with middle school and high school. So we did all the core lessons, kept those all done. But you know, we either do a lesson or an activity at each meeting. And then I guess essentially at the middle school level, it is, it's very similar in that sense. So it's fun though, getting both groups together because of course the middle schoolers are like, you know, some have siblings that are older and are in Hope Squad, but they think it's really cool to partner with the high school.
We didn't do partner stuff last year, that's all started this year.
Yeah.
Well, Minute to Win It, Hannah, you helped with that too.
Oh yeah.
So that was where, yes, Minute to Win It was during a football game. We had one minute at halftime and there was about like seven, eight of us?
There's more because of middle school, it's probably like 15 actually, middle schoolers.
Okay, with the middle school, it was like 15. So we each, we had a middle schooler go with a high schooler and we each split up, some went to Vanderstede's student section, some went to ours. And we just all collected money from everyone that was there and we had a minute to do it and we raised over $800.
Nice. So what do you do with the money that gets the thousand dollars from Brat Hut and the $800? Like, I mean, how does that get spent?
Right.
Well, some of it is, we all get shirts every year and that's not cheap because you have to order them through Hope Squad. The curriculum, you have to pay for that yearly. This year, like we did that retreat, so that was bussing, all of us getting there and having to do the ropes courses. So we had to pay them to run the ropes course. What else is funding, oh, that like we gave out stickers and bracelets, things like that when we were doing the Brat Hut. We were talking about doing the parade Saturday, we don't know if that's happening yet, because we give out candy and stuff then.
Yeah, other resource material for the community, things like that, printing posters and, you know, advertising and all that stuff. So people are aware of it.
What does the training look like? Is you, you get nominated and then it goes through a process and you get selected to be on Hope Squad? What does that, that training look like this year?
So there's four core phases and those look a little bit different between middle school and high school curriculum, but very similar background. And so we split for those when we did our retreat. And the core phases are the QPR, which is question, persuade, refer. So we have more with public health comes out and does that training. And then we have setting boundaries, self-care and support. I'm sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head. And then there's, like I said, other lessons that we do throughout the year, at least once a month. And then usually the opposite then is an activity. But the lessons are really focused on assuring and reminding the students that they're not counselors, they're not therapists. You know, you not expect them to solve anyone's problem, but to make sure that they're setting those healthy boundaries, putting others first. And then they need all for support too and making sure that they kind of know how to do that self-assessment of, you know, maybe when it's too much, so.
And each year we have to get a retreat. So once you're like, once you get voted on, then you're on up until you're senior and you graduate. But you have to do the training every single year.
So our new students are going to be doing the QPR training, I think December 9th, they're coming to train them in QPR. And Hope Squad is just supposed to be the eyes and the ears of the school. They're not counselors and they get the adults, the trusted adults.
Hope Squad has been in Alphamary.
Four.
Four, four, okay.
And it's a program that the entire county, Walworth County Health and Human Services adopted. They use some of the federal Esther funds to sponsor Hope Squad programs in the districts that didn't have Hope Squad already up and going. And yeah, it's, it's something that has been a county focus, which is nice because there's synergy in that. Support from the Health and Human Services and those support structures as well.
In May, I think we're going to have a, it's either 17th or 18th, the countywide Hope Squad event. So all of the Hope Squads in the counties are going to be together and so that'll be exciting.
Well, thank you for your interest and your time and your efforts. I'm sure it's well received and very, very useful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have the overnight travel request for the wrestling team.
I guess silly.
How you doing? Do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Jake Stelling, new head coach.
Come around, steal him.
Oh yeah, come on up here.
You are the old. He's got big shoes to fill.
Well, he, he felt me pretty good. The trip, the overnights this year are the same as they were last year, exact same thing. There's three overnights plus the state tournament, though we want to make sure that that was included, provided that we have wrestlers qualified for the state tournament. So everything's the same, Northern Badger is up in River Falls, it was a really, really good tournament up there.
Have you stayed at the Econ Lodge before?
Yep.
And it was okay?
It was.
Remember wrestling is all you have. I understand. You wouldn't have paid me the expense.
It's, it's sleep, it really is sleep.
I think, I think it was that we actually were supposed to stand down last year and they switched us to the one. It was, it wasn't the Econ Lodge because I stayed at that for high school stuff when I was in summer wrestling.
Yeah.
I mean, it's good enough for wrestling. Lunch, I was trying to help my schoolmates to sleep two nights.
As I say, they pretty much sleep, they really don't do much else. You know, because wrestling's such a long day, they, and they get to sleep, they sleep.
How many, do you know how many kids are going to each one or?
We need roughly 10 to 15, it's usually closer to 10 though.
So they're pretty much just varsity for these?
Yeah, yeah, it's all varsity.
As you mentioned varsity, I was, the December 1st, the second day, you mentioned varsity, so that's like.
Yes.
The JVs have a really good schedule, we feel too, that, you know, that they compete at, but they're all local.
Oh, yeah.
Middleton, you know, they go to Waukesha. There's a lot, and we host one with us JV tournaments in Spalding State by December 17th at 25 teams.
Are the days of 12 jewels and three tournaments just kind of by the wayside?
Does Whitewater still do that one or not anymore?
The Mid States, yeah, they do, yes.
Yeah, I knew we were doing that one.
Yeah, that one's kind of fell and that's, that's a big reason why we ended up at River Falls. The competition level there just hasn't been, hasn't been that good.
Right.
So yeah, the River Falls is a part of the state that we just don't see any of the teams, any competitors. It's so nice to wrestle.
So a lot of Minnesota teams.
There's some Minnesota teams and even that part of the state and Northwest, you know, you don't see a lot of them until you go to the state tournament. But it's just nice to see a lot of competition.
Competition, yeah, right.
It was really beneficial last year, I thought, either up there or in there.
Working your way up to the cheese head. It'll be a while.
It's gonna be a little. That's pretty high up on the ladder, but.
So you've got four chaperones, who you have?
We'll have four coaches.
Okay.
Well, it's three paid coaches, not independent, since it's all here in.
Yeah.
Up there. For managers, one of their parents usually comes up.
Huge appearance, I think, around somewhere.
Yes.
I remember trying to do a breakfast feed. When your kid's 99 pounds and you don't know what the other kids eat. I did pretty good.
You did.
I did, I did, my kid ate as much as the heavyweight.
Yeah.
So. Good old days. Well, you think you're ready to handle it, huh?
They'll try.
Good, good. It'll be fun, it'll be fun to watch.
Well, the club already has almost three times as many kids registered as last year, so he's, he's awesome and there's no doubt about it.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Well, if no one else has any more questions to be able to do this because they're overnight, we would need a motion.
I move to approve the overnight travel request for the wrestling team as presented.
You have a second?
I'll start.
We have a motion to approve the overnight travel request from the wrestling team as presented and a second. A roll call please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Come on.
Is Mr. Donald with us?
Yes.
I just muted it. Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
All right, motion is passed, good luck and let's deal with that.
Yeah.
Keep us informed.
Yeah. The blacks run the tournament up there.
Oh, they do.
So it's.
Oh, that'd be fun.
Got a point up there, but yeah, so it's kind of neat to go up and see them.
Yeah, I miss, I miss those days.
Yeah.
I'm so busy, but I can't sit with the pictures like that.
You put your time in though.
Yeah, yeah, I did.
You put your time in.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
My, my wife texted me, holy wrestlers, exclamation mark, so many cats.
Take care. All right, we are going on to the Food Service Director report and the second reading of revised ordinate wellness policy. So would we like a presentation about the questions we had about the food service?
Yeah, so let me go ahead, just so we can associate the face there. And let's see, Tori, if I stop presenting, can you present?
Um, so I actually, I'm fine if you present, I actually have another laptop and I have slides printed, so whenever's easiest.
I'll go ahead and present. This is Tori Castine, our food service director. I asked her to come and present, we had some questions at the last, at the first reading of the policy and I thought there were some good questions and that Tori could do a much better job answering questions related to the federal food service program, the guidelines, what it requires. And I also saw, I won't steal any, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Tori. Let me go ahead and reshare this and I'll pull the presentation up.
Perfect. So a quick little introduction, yes, my name is Tori Castine, so maybe you guys may remember me from last year. Quick background, I have my bachelor's degree in dietetics and I have minors in public health and leadership as well. I am currently a nutrition and dietetics technician registered, so with that you have to keep up with continuing education credits each year, you have food foods examinations, just professional standards that, you know, in order to keep those credentials. So that's just a little bit about me. Thank you for accommodating me doing it remotely. My husband injured his shoulder pretty bad over Thanksgiving, so I'm kind of doing caretaker role with him as well. But jumping right into kind of what you guys were talking about last board meeting. Quick overview of our department, we are currently serving three elementary schools, our middle school, high school. And then we also do provide meals for CCA options and SOFOs for a total of eight locations. We currently have 24, I say cooks, but some of them don't necessarily do all the cooking, but 24 food service employees with two current open positions. Those current positions range from anywhere from three hours to seven hours a day. And then on average, among all of the locations, we're doing around 1,500 lunches a day and around 560 breakfasts a day. So just a quick little overview in regards to what our department is serving. Breakfast requirements, so the fun thing about, you know, working in school nutrition is that there are lots and lots of regulations we have to follow. And they are, they're no joke. So they are different if we, for breakfast and for lunch. I do have requirements for breakfast and lunch, so we're just going to touch on breakfast first because they do differ. For example, one cup of fruit has to be offered across the board, no matter what, each day. For grains, at least one ounce equivalent for all grades has to be offered. This can be kind of confusing to the general public because I think a lot of people think one ounces of grain is literally like a weighed ounce of grains, but each product that we choose and serve is like a school nutrition product that is deemed by the USDA, that certain equivalent. Meat and meal alternative, that is optional, so items like that would be like string cheese, yogurt, seeds, that sort of thing. And then milk is a required daily offering that we do have to offer kids at the breakfast and lunch level every single day. There are, if you take a look at the bottom of the graph for the table, it has daily amount based on average for five-day weeks. So there are specifications for min and max calories, saturated fat, sodium and trans fat. But these numbers, again, have to be an average over the total week. So some days might be on the higher end, some days might be on the lower end, but on average, as long as they are within that range, it is acceptable or acceptable for the federal regulations. Any questions regarding breakfast requirements?
I see that there's no, there's no recommendations for sugar. Can you, can you explain that to us so we understand why that is and?
Yeah, so that is a great question. Honestly, when it comes to the federal regulations, I feel like there was a huge emphasis on, and I think anybody could know this in regards to like diet culture, huge emphasis on like what kind of fats and like cholesterol and people were consuming back then. Obviously dietary requirements and recommendations change, they're reviewed every five to 10 years. I've done some digging, unfortunately, there really isn't a, like a core base as to why they don't have the actual added sugar recommendation. So I was doing some digging and for example, for the fruits, they actually indicated in the requirement saying that, you know, for the fruit, it can have fresh, frozen, canned and dried. And you can have added sugars within the frozen, so they actually indicate that, which is kind of bizarre. So unfortunately, even though there isn't any sort of recommendation on added sugars, that is something that we as a department, and especially with my background, I do consider this. It's just unfortunate because so many things have added sugars. But we are trying to, as best as we can with what we can get, adjust those levels. So I know that's not like a super clear answer. Unfortunately though, it's just not in the federal guidelines for what they say. And it's the same thing for lunch, so they do not touch base on added sugars at all for breakfast or for lunch. But it is something that is on our radar, which is why we're trying to offer different items as well. But again, it just has to deal with what we can actually get.
Good point. Could you, could you share with the board what you would recommend for this added sugar level? I mean, just based on, you know, your education and certifications? What, what would you recommend if, if you had to give a recommendation for the district? Could you explain it to us?
Yeah, I mean, personally with my education, my background, obviously the least amount of added sugars that we can, you know, offer that is ideal. That being said though, with the amount of items that we can actually procure as like a food service department within our co-op, it really does limit it. The other issue is a lot of the added sugars actually comes from the milk and we have to offer that every single day for both breakfast and for lunch. So that is always going to be a chunk of the added sugars component that, you know, is a concern. And because it's a federal requirement and for us to be able to participate in that, we have to offer it. But with that being said, if we actually skip the lunch slide, so two slides for an ounces, offer versus serve, I can kind of touch base for that. It kind of goes into how we could possibly, even though there's, you know, so many added sugars within the items that we offer, depending on what kids actually take, because they do not have to take everything that we offer, that's the other thing. So we do participate in offer versus serve. Based on this, all students have to have at least half a cup of fruits, vegetable or fruit and vegetable combo for a meal to be reimbursable for both breakfast and lunch. And then under offer versus serve, we have to offer four food items from the three required food components. So that's the fruit, grains and the fluid milk. So I just kind of broke down an example from one of our breakfasts. So we offer one day a bagel, cream cheese, apple slices, juice and milk. Out of all of those offered, three items have to be taken or taken and it has, one portion has to be fruit. So a student could take bagel, cream cheese and apple slices to meet this requirement. And in that case, like breaking down those added sugars, it's pretty minimal. Even like the bagels that we offer, they're pretty restrict on having things whole grain and high in fiber. And tends, when those items tend to be higher, the added sugars tend to be lower. But that's kind of how, in a roundabout way, we would say, obviously, like we don't want to be adding tons of sugars to all these kids' diets. So like the least amount that we can get, but it also really heavily deals with what we can get that complies with everything else for the federal program.
And Tori, you were sharing with me that in regards to the milk requirement, we're required to provide a flavored milk.
That is correct, yes. So we have to offer at, at least two different types of milk. So we do offer. So, we do offer the skim and then we also offer the low fats chocolate milk as well. So, again, that's a huge component where, you know, we might see where the added sugars might add up totally. But again, underneath federal guidelines, we have to offer at least two different types of milk for the milk fluid component underneath these regulations.
How do you accommodate like lactose intolerant or diabetic students?
Yeah, so that's a great question. I feel like our department does a very good job regarding that. Each year we do go ahead and make sure to contact parents or secretary saying, if your child needs some sort of dietary accommodation regarding restrictions, we have, parents fill out a form and they get medical consent saying that we have to go ahead and accommodate these. So, our programs do have a list of approved fluid components that could replace milk for a kid, like let's say that does have a dairy intolerance or a dairy allergy or as well kids that are gluten free. So, as long as we have those medical documents with the parents, we go ahead and do everything that we can to at least offer them a well-rounded meal that still counts as reimbursable and meeting those requirements to the best of their abilities.
Is there a different kind of flavored milk besides the chocolate, you say that it's required?
So, there is strawberry milk as well. I'm not gonna lie, it is harder to get and it's not very popular among everybody. So, we do opt for the chocolate instead of the strawberry, just because the nutritional values between the two are pretty similar. But chocolate is more well-recepted versus strawberry.
And it has, like, we can't offer skim milk and whole milk and skip the chocolate milk?
Yep, so they do say, and I can bring it, can't bring it up on your end, but there is part of, DPI has like in a nutshell, so essentially it goes through all the requirements and what is accepted and what is not. This is just a snapshot of saying what is allowed. So, the milk, it just says one cup daily, but the two requirements are a flavored and a non-flavored, so.
And I remember there was quite a bit made about loosening some of the restrictions on the school lunch. When Michelle Obama was first lady, that was one of her areas that she worked at. And I read a couple of good articles, I think that sugar requirement, I think she wanted to look at that, but I think they ran into the hiccup of what they could procure and provide and from the the logistics and all of that, what was available. But I know, you know, when the Trump administration loosened it, for example, milk went from skim to 1%. Like you couldn't provide a whole milk if you wanted to, correct? It's 1% is the limit?
Yes, so they do because there are, they have the saturated fat limitations. So, there's, you know, animal fat contributes to that, so they have to take that into consideration when it comes to what kind of milk that we offer as well. So, it's, there's lots, yeah, there's lots of different guidelines and restrictions when it comes to that, but also things that they have to consider before they say, okay, this is okay, but wait, now this actually affects this dietary component, so.
I believe, and I think there's a lot of from that federal level on that program, I would imagine there's a lot of pressure from lobby groups and so forth. If I recall correctly, I think one of the articles said that the single largest consumer of dairy in in school lunch. And you think about the history and how, you know, important that is, you know, like, yeah, not having that is, I would imagine that sometimes the nutrition takes a backseat to some of, there's a lot of factors going into it.
Yes, I think there's, there's definitely a huge part of the food service side that a lot of people don't realize is very much a business side as well. Unfortunately, that's one part, you know, if I could serve like the healthiest food in the world and not have to worry about, you know, breaking certain guidelines, I would love to do that. But in order to not jeopardize funding or, you know, how we procure goods and whatnot, we, we have to abide by those regulations. Because financially, what they do to help us and what we're able to do because of being a part of this program, it's, it's worth it, so.
Could you go over the, the lunch meal, what that looks like?
So, lunch is a little bit different, but it's still, still kind of the same. We still have to offer at least half a cup of fruit every single day. We have to offer three-fourths cup of vegetables. Vegetables are broken down into a bigger component, so dark green, red, orange, beans and peas, starchy and other. This is not daily, this is just across the week. So, the three-fourths a cup is a day, but all the subcomponents are what should be offered throughout the week. Just to note on that, for example, red, orange, technically pizza sauce and marinara sauce counts as a red, orange vegetable. I think that's insane. So, I personally have since taken over, and I'll touch base on this on, you know, solid things that we've been doing as a department. We've been actually implementing whole vegetables fresh at elementary school level because like I said, pizza sauce and marinara to me do not count as red, orange vegetables, but you know, peppers and carrots do. So, that is something that we are trying to implement. In other ways, even though yes, we're still abiding by the federal regulations, this is how we're going to improve them as a district. Grains as well, daily we have to have a one ounce equivalent. Again, each of those food components for the day, for what we can get for the main entree. Usually that's where the main grain equivalent comes from, but those are all broken down by child nutrition labels. So, specifically when we go ahead and menu and we were like, okay, we're going to bring this product in, this is how much the equivalent for grains and meat is for this given product. So, we do have like a huge surplus of essentially like a file of product information because, you know, when DPI comes in and does have to do edit or audits, they do check to make sure that we are going ahead and abiding by these regulations. Otherwise, it could jeopardize our funding. Same with milk, has to be offered, but again, lunch is also offer versus serve. Most kids, especially at the upper lever, of upper level do not take milk. And even actually down at the lower level, we've seen a decrease of milk consumption as well. So, that is pretty much the gist of the lunch requirements. And then touched base on this slide before with offers versus serve. That's pretty much, again, we just have to make sure kids take a fruit and a vegetable and at least three of the four required components. And then things to kind of consider when it comes to what we may offer in menu. One big thing at an elementary level is eating in the classrooms. So, breakfast is, like, kids come or the cooks go and deliver the breakfast to the classroom for each given classroom and it hinders what we can serve due to having to pack and ship out everything into these containers. And also teachers, which I do not blame them, some of the stuff is messy and we don't want to, you know, have tons of crumbs in their learning space, especially if, you know, like let's say there's not going to be a custodian coming in after and sweeping up every single kid's mess. So, that is something that we could consider. It does kind of hinder what we can offer for breakfast, especially. Lunch is different because all the kids come to the cafeteria. Other issues is definitely supply chain issues. So, one, Cisco is our new vendor for this year. Gordon's Food Service did drop our co-op last year, so we did have to go ahead and restart everything over with Cisco. The unfortunate part about that is, one, many manufacturers are not making previous school nutrition items that they used to due to the lack of labor. So, those items are limited to begin with. And then what Cisco can actually get as a distributor is limited. Although there's tons of schools everywhere that participate, the unfortunate reality is that commercial kind of rules all. So, whatever warehouse space that there is, we've found within our co-op that we're not able to get certain items that we would love to have because Cisco doesn't have the warehouse space, because commercial departments kind of overrule. So, that is one unfortunate thing when it comes to some of the supply chain issues that we're facing as well as like the labor shortages, produce shortages and growing conditions as well right now in California are not very good. Our produce, like again, we're at least offering fresh fruit and fresh vegetable every single day at the elementary school level and we have been at the middle school and high school. But depending on what we can get and because of what's in season and how it's long it takes to travel, definitely varies on what we can offer. Another, I don't know if anybody has paid attention, but there's a lot of rail strikes going on right now. So, that has definitely affected the time that we get certain products. I have to special order things like a month in advance, which is hard when you cycle menu for six weeks. And, you know, you put an order in four weeks in advance because I tell you it's going to take four weeks to get here and then all of a sudden they don't have enough, you know, school nutrition products to go across whatever schools that they're serving. So, just some things to consider when it comes to what we actually offer and what we can get that are considered school nutrition food products. Staffing is also another dilemma. We, I could make like homemade things from scratch, that would be ideal. But again, with our time constraints and how much or how many meals that we're offering a day, it definitely hinders what we can produce as well, again, as what items that we can get via the supply chain issues. So, those are really the big issues that we're having. And then obviously cost of things as well. So, we've been having to kind of dial back on certain items that we may have been able to get no problem before. But like, for example, some of our canned fruit, which is even commodities, like the government gives us a discount price, it has like increased, so let's say like a can of pears was, or a case of pears was $20 last year, it'll be like $60 this year. So, the amount of inflation when it comes to these products has definitely affected, you know, we have to consider what we can menu and what we cannot, so I have to consider the cost of those things. However, due to being part of the federal program, we do have the federal funding, which one thing I am very thankful for is our department did not have to raise meal prices this year, especially because it's not universal free meals. While everybody in my co-op and pretty much the surrounding area had to increase meal prices for all students, which I'm happy to say that because going from free to paid to begin with was a huge adjustment, our school district didn't pose that, and like additional burden as well because we have the federal funding and the means to help out these families that are in need, so.
How big is your co-op? You've mentioned co-op a few times, so is that?
Yeah, so that's a great question. There is, I want to say there's nine or 10 of us. So, there is quite, we're quite a big bunch of people. It is almost nearly impossible to get all of us together at once because food service is different every single day and half the time, one of us has to end up in the kitchen anyways, which is totally okay. But yes, there's around nine to 10 of us.
And there's a couple of larger districts towards Milwaukee areas and.
Yeah, so like our co-op consists of Elm Brook, which is huge. We also have, like, Maguano is part of our co-op, Whitewater, Greenfield, Greendale. There's, we're very diverse. But yeah, it's, it's interesting. We're all pretty much experiencing, I mean, obviously we're experiencing the same problems in the sense that we're procuring the same types of things because we're in a co-op and, and whatnot, but at very different levels as well, so.
Do you want to speak to the reimbursement rates, how that works, Tori, now that we're not at the universal free lunch?
Yeah, so I think this is just a great kind of layout, especially financially, what being parts of the federal funded program of the national school lunch program as well as the breakfast program. Two of our schools are considered, they're considered severe breakfast, so we do get an additional higher reimbursement for every single reimbursable meal that a child receives. So, this, and this is for meals across the board. So, we get like a base pay for paid meals, reduced meals and kids that are direct certified are free. Depending on their status of free, paid or reduced will also affect how much money we give back at a reimbursement level. So, two of our schools, I'm sorry, two of our schools are non-severe, the rest are severe. And then the national school lunch program, they don't have the two categories, they are all grouped together. So, if you go to the next slide, I broke down October lunch specifically and I didn't break down breakfast, but I can tell you what we got back via reimbursements. So, we did get over $60,000 in federal reimbursements by adhering to national school lunch program requirements. It's kind of hard to see, but it is broken down by each school. They do, like I said, they break it down by how many kids are free, how many are reduced and how many are paid. And then for breakfast, it's not listed, we did receive over $16,000 for a reimbursement just for October alone. So, this is just given in one month, so you can imagine how it would impact us financially if we didn't receive the reimbursements, like for the entire year, if we like weren't a part of the program.
What, what were the overall costs roughly for October? What were our costs overall for both lunch and breakfast?
So, I didn't break down overall costs for this, but considering, I might have to do some quick math in my head, I was looking at this before and I didn't include it. On average, give me a moment. I gotta pull some numbers and do some quick math. And this is something that, you know, if I had the time, I would have totally have done this or I can still, if you, this is something you guys are interested in, I can actually pull the actual numbers.
Hundred thousand and we're getting, you know, 80, you know, paid for, is that roughly how it works out?
Tori, if I could just jump in here.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Back, because 1819 would have been the, the last full year we were under the regular program of free, reduced and paid meals because next year we had ration the rest of the year. And at that time, our budget was probably just over a million dollars and about 60% of that was the federal reimbursement. And then the remaining portion, there was maybe four or 5%, we get from the state and the rest would have been the paid meals. This year's budget is about $1.7 million. So, if you look at that, you know, the reimbursement rate and such, it's still going to be probably in that 50 to 60% range in terms of that. Does that help me?
Yeah, absolutely.
Does the state have the same standards as the federal?
This is federal program.
Right.
So, the state steps in and gives us some reimbursement.
So, but they don't have all these requirements on nutrition?
I'm not aware of any other state ones, it's all federal, isn't it, Tori?
It is all federal guidelines, so across the board, across the country, if anybody is participating in this program, these are the regulations that they have to follow. So, yeah, just like a quick cost comparative, I did do the math on this. If, let's say we were not involved in the federal national school lunch program, just to cover October free and reduced lunch meals, and this does not include options or CCA, it would be, from that given number, it would be around $22,000 if every child that actually qualified, because that's another thing, not every kid that qualifies for free lunch or reduced lunch actually takes lunch. But if every child did, it would cost $40,000 just to cover those costs that we wouldn't be getting from the funding otherwise. um, that we wouldn't be getting from the funding otherwise.
Can you tell us how many, like, let's say just elementary, how many kids just bring, bring their own lunches? Like percentage wise?
Um, so I don't know the enrollment off the top of my head for each elementary school, but I can tell you for lunch counts approximately, we usually do anywhere between like two hundred and sixty and three hundred and fifty lunches at the elementary school level a day.
So the average elementary is probably about four hundred students.
Yeah, so it's probably about two thirds of the elementary.
Yeah, our participation's pretty high, and some schools are a little bit higher than other, others. Why that is, I don't know, but hopefully, I mean, we, we want kids to take lunch because it is actually proven that the meals that we offer at a school level is more well-rounded, um, given like dietary recommendations, or if you refer to My Plates versus them like what families actually pack their kids in cold lunches. So we do want kids to participate because there is, there are lots of nutritional benefits in regards to that.
And there's a lot of bartering that goes on between cold lunch and hot lunch. So what we serve may not be the calorie intake as, uh, Daddy gave me.
Yes, so it's, we have, and that's the thing too, like especially at an elementary school level where we do counts. Um, we, we have been offering some new items, and some of that's just because we don't have a choice and that's what we can get. Others, it's because I strategically implemented them. And kids go through the line and, I mean, like a normal person would, they see something, they're like, wait, I wanna eat that. So our counts do fluctuate based on, you know, actually like what kids see and how things are plated as well, so.
So I had asked Tori the, the financial piece because I, I, as a dietitian and someone in food service, I, I think, I don't wanna speak for you, but it would be a dream to not have to deal with the federal regulations and just, if we were to say as a school district, we're now out, out of the federal program, what would it cost us a year? I'm hearing somewhere between seven hundred to a million is about what it would run to not negatively impact the current families on free and reduced lunch.
Yeah.
And that would just be a starting point. You would need to, we would need to build in increases as the prices increase and so forth. But that's what I wanted to pin down, because there are districts that don't participate. They decided they, they wanna move away from it. But that's, that's about what it would cost initially, is seven hundred to a million dollars means we wouldn't have to deal with any of the federal guidelines along those lines.
The, the other ripple effect, which I don't have the exact answer on, is a number of our other federal programs, education programs, IDA,
Yeah.
title grants are all based on free and reduced percentage.
Right.
So for those districts that moved away from that, for example, I'm not sure how that affects the federal money.
May I ask, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
I know, it's a lot.
No questions, I just, I agree. If we could get away from following all the regulations, that'd be great, but I just, the, you know, the cost of doing that would be, would be huge. And then, you know, stacked over the course of years, it would get larger and larger, and it would become a significant issue down the road, so it might not be a, although it might be a great idea. It might not work out as well as we had hoped.
Right.
Yeah, and that's, again, that's, I mean, with like my background and everything, this is issues that, you know, like I feel pull at my heartstrings, and I know certain things I would love to change, but unfortunately, there are strict regulations that I just have to adhere to, and I have to put the emotions aside. So again, I will always advocate for adolescent nutrition, um, and, you know, nutrition regardless. Um, just because being proactive with your health is extremely important, and it definitely matters at a younger level, because that's where all the exposure happens. Um, that being said, so we do have some nice pictures of some of our, so it's really funny. This is hummus, that is where the cursor is, the kids thought it was cookie dough. Put it out, yes, which is very, very comical. Actually, a lot of, um, elementary schools did take to it. So for example, we have to meet that legume, um, requirement weekly. And quite frankly, I'm sick of, you know, serving refied beans every single week. I think that's insane. So I was like, you know what, hummus is chickpeas, that counts as a legume, let's go ahead and give it a try. And actually, a lot of kids have started to actually consume it more. So the first day, they were like very disappointed, as well as the veggie burgers, I'm not gonna lie, I tried pushing for that one. They were super disappointed, I'm not, I think I traumatized them a little bit because the next time chicken patties were on the menu, they thought it was a veggie burger. So we, yeah, so I was like, oh goodness, okay, we need to stay away from that. Um, because they didn't trust me after that, and I was like, oh great, can't ruin the trust. So just some things that we're trying to do. I did mention briefly, like, we're not counting, or I'm not counting pizza sauce and spaghetti sauce as the red orange. We're actually having like red peppers, um, orange peppers, carrots throughout the week. Um, and then adding varieties to our second options as well for our entrees. So before, they just used to get a some butter and string cheese if you didn't like, you know, the main entree. Now we're doing yogurt and granola. Um, we're doing different options, I'm just trying to think. Yeah, yogurt and granola, yogurt and some string cheese, trying to switch it up as much as we can, um, just so it's not the same thing every single day. But yes, the veggie bar at the elementary school level has definitely been something that we're very proud of. Especially because kids, like, they're actually taking them and they're excited about it, so, yeah. Any, I guess, questions regarding anything that was discussed about?
Under improvements for this year, you have implementing share bins at schools, what's your event?
Yeah, so this is something my assistant, Ashley Drake, really, um, kind of took apart. So she's listening, if you wanna say hi, Ashley.
Hello.
So Ashley used to work at Jackson Elementary School as an aide. Um, she kind of took on the project, so this was previously done, and we've seen it across the country. And especially because meals are no longer free universally, um, and also with the income requirements to qualify for free and reduce, it doesn't necessarily, like, it's pretty, it's, you would think that it would be, you know, they would adjust it via inflation and other economic costs, what's going on with our, in our country, and that's not the case. Um, so we're actually seeing families that, like, a lot of families that would have previously qualified for free and reduced no longer qualify for it, which is a huge bummer. Um, so these share bins, Ashley, do you wanna talk about it a little bit, or?
Sure, I can do that. So ideally, the share bin, like, when I first wanted to do this, was like, a child, I pack my kids peanut butter cracker Ritz sandwiches, they don't want it. They go put it up on the share bin, it's individually wrapped, they don't want it, another could take it home. Well, it's kind of turned into our whole, like, fresh vegetable fruit thing too. Um, I, I'm very passionate about this, like, I want all the kids to be fed. Um, I know my kids are like going up there, I pack them like fresh veggies and fruit when, you know, they have cold lunch. Um, but they're going up there, because it's just extra. Um, there might be kids that, you know, they don't have every means at home. I know those kids personally, they're grabbing stuff to take home and put in their, like, backpacks for the end of the day. So ideally, this all started like, you know, we, we're gonna share, you know, goldfish, individual, anything individually wrapped at, you know, they can grab it. Um, but it's kind of turned into, we have all this funding, we have all this money, we can put fresh produce, we can put apples, we can put bananas, and it's not just at like the elementary levels. Uh, Mr. Fisher is like a huge advocate at the middle school for this, like, there's milk, there's apples. Like, it's just little things, but I want this program to grow. Um, I believe in it, and I just, I don't know.
Yeah, no, that's great.
You can talk about this.
No, that's, that's exactly what it is. I mean, for example, um, so let's say like, on a Wednesday, we offer fresh cut cucumbers and tomatoes, and there's, you know, twenty of those containers that are pre-portioned and they're left over. In the past, that would be thrown away, which technically via, you know, food safety regulations, you do have a seven day time period from when things were freshly cut. So those items are now being offered the next day, that they can be out for kids to grab additionally. Same with like bananas, of like, there is so many bananas being thrown away because they're like, uh, these look like bananas almost to the point where you'd use them for banana bread. Um, but some kids love them, so it's like, why not, let's try to give them, because they're going to be tossed regardless. Um, and there's actually a fair amount of kids that actually go ahead and take these types of items. Or Ashley brought up the milk, so the milk is a great example. We have lots of kids that take the milk, they don't drink the milk. So what can they do with the milk? They could put it in a share bin. So we do have little coolers, um, and kids go ahead. So for example, we've run into issues where families that are free and reduced, you know, they get their free meal, um, they, they qualify for a free meal, but then a child wants an extra milk, we have to charge them for a milk, even though that they qualify for free lunch and free breakfast. They can go to the share bin, and if there's a milk in there, they can go ahead and grab it. So that is another way that we've been improving, that Ashley has definitely, above and beyond to get it implemented at all of the school levels.
Do they have that at like CCA and Options then too?
So we do tell, um, CCA and Options that, because their schedules are a little bit different than ours, like at the end of the week and whatever's left over, they can go ahead and send it home with families and kids that are in need.
Yep, which is huge.
All right, any, no other questions?
Just a, if I could take a moment, just a shout out for the work that Tori and, and really Ashley, both of them have done here in the short time.
Yeah.
Tori started with us back probably about a year ago, but she started as Ellen Leeger's assistant. We later called her, and then came to this position, both of them have been in their current roles probably about five months.
I think I've only been here three months with you, Bill, but that's okay.
And not an easy time in the food service industry.
Right, no, right, right. Well, thank you again, Tori, we appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Uh, thank you. The next item is that wellness policy, whether or not we would like to proceed with this? As it's written?
Yeah, do you have any more comments?
Okay.
So.
So to approve it, we would need a motion.
I'll move to approve the revised 459 wellness policy as presented.
Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second to approve the revised 459 wellness policy as presented. Roll call vote please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion is carried, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time in putting that together, um, Miss Castillo, and thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the High School Board Minutes for November fourteenth. Does anyone have any comments or questions? If not, we can entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two regular session School Board Meeting as presented.
Do we have a second? We have a motion to approve the minutes of the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two regular sessions, School Board Meeting Minutes as presented, roll call vote please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Abstain.
Uh, Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion is carried, thank you. Now we're on to general and other fund bills.
The, uh, general other fund bills this evening covers checks number one four seven eight nine one to one four seven nine nine eight, ACH check number two ninety-seven to three twenty-three, in a combined amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-four cents. It's a smaller list than how the money is sent typically, so fewer days across the state accounts payable.
Oh, okay, well, that's, it's the holiday.
Yep.
Any questions? Any, any expenses? If not, we can entertain a motion.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, check numbers one four seven eight nine one to one four seven nine nine eight, and ACH numbers two ninety-seven to three two-three, in a combined amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-four cents as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve the general and other fund bills of November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, check numbers one four seven eight ninety-one to one four seven nine ninety-eight, ACH numbers two ninety-seven to three twenty-three, for the combined amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-four cents as presented. Roll call please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion is carried, thank you. Our next items are report discussion items, and the first on here is student representative report. And Ms. Williams, you can have the report.
All right, so these are the ways on November fourteenth today. And then for Westside, on the left there, our pictures of a class intended, it was Mr. Cruz's class. The class had received ten paws, I'm not sure what the paws are, but once they received that, um, they had this bike race in the hallways, so.
That's cool.
And then to the right.
I'll start.
Is that doctor day recipients, so if you're not familiar with that, it's just students who are picked for showing like excellence in responsibility, safety, and, um, you know, more respectfulness. So they all get a free book, a book to pick out, so those were a couple of them. Uh, for Tivis, on the left there, is a green skier, a green screen, so they were kind of photoshopping themselves into the Macy Day Parade. I guess it's not very blown up, but.
Cool.
It's really funny, if you can see them close up. And then there's their turkeys, and a lot of them wrote that they were very thankful for the veteran who tried to make their escape, and some didn't take them off. And then on the right is their technology class, first they read a book about like the history of Macy Day Parade, and then they built these clothes using boobots, I'm not familiar with those, but they just moved there in a line, there was a video, but.
The boobots starts them on working on their computer coding and so forth, because they program an application.
They're actually pretty cool. They just not like they're there. Uh, right, and then for Jackson, we have Stone Soup there on the left, where they, they read a book about it, and they made it in class. And then to the right in the top, we have our Math Masters, the one on the left is an addition fact master, and then on the right, division fact master. And then under there, uh, they're what they're named for, and I just thought they were so adorable.
Good.
And then in the bottom right corner is, uh, a couple students were working with their fourth grade helper, which is the boy in the orange, on just multiplication, multiplication practice. And then from middle school, um, the picture on the left, and then the one right under that is just pictures from the Operation Christmas Child, where they, uh, wrapped four hundred and fifty gifts this year, and they had a total of fifty volunteers, and that was the Middle School Wilders Club. That's very cool, I thought, and then to the right, which is, they had a snowball fight, which I thought was funny. And then for the high school, um, obviously, I came in and presented, so there's a picture from, or a few pictures from that. And then, uh, some pictures from the girls swim banquet awards, just because they think, so it doesn't get a lot of recognition as our other sports do, so I included that in there. And then of course, our bar swim, if any of you are interested, our Hallykey fundraiser tomorrow, I believe, and mob pizza. And then also, uh, the link down there is, uh, we had a career fair. And then also, uh, the link down there is, uh, we had a career fair on Wednesday. Here's a video of that. So that was a really cool opportunity. Students get to pick, uh, true career fields that they're interested in and in the base split, obviously they can go on and then they go to the next. It's a really cool opportunity. So I think I can speak to all the students and say we're really grateful for it. We learned a lot. And then for options, so a big shout out to the amazing people at Options because they sent me a presentation of kind of stuff they can opt to. Um, I linked it there on the top if anyone wants to look. But that's, yeah, a much more in-depth and pictured than what I had. I just stole a few from guys. So they had their four K, five K piece. And then the next slide is the high school study sessions. And for CCA, on the bottom left, um, Elkhorn Mills builds are creating a new learning room at Snowpools. So and I believe the other day there was, they just, uh, started the electrical, so kids are learning how to do some, like they watch the electrician put in that, so they're really lost. And then in the middle, uh, students took the opportunity to go visit former Hamilton. We just did a tour of the place and what goes down there. And in the right, I just included, we had an Elmer's Holiday workshop, or we will be having on it if anyone, you know, is interested or not anyone that's interested.
And there's also a video link to a employer presented. CCA gave us one. All right. Let me check, um, through my online people. I got a text message that she lost the audio. Is that?
I still have it.
I have it too. It I lost it for a little bit, but it came back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. It's back on.
Good. All right. Any questions for the student presentation?
Always interesting.
Yeah.
Would you guys present?
Yeah, I appreciate it. Don't make it easy.
Okay, now we have director's reports. We have Ms. Weitzel will have the director's report this evening, so I'm assuming that's you.
Thank you. I'm sure you, I can go another day if you guys have been doing a long. Get your ones out. I'm running right for you. So do as I say and not as I do. Now do as I say and not as I do. Okay? Touch your shoulder. Touch your elbow. Ooh, you guys are good. Touch your chin. Ooh, you guys. That's where they feel the big bugs. You passed. Well, thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Esther Weitzel. I am the parent connections coordinator for the district. And I moved this year about five months in. Too. And I am following my predecessor and mentor's footsteps, Ms. Kathy Woods, who, um, did a lot of trailblazing in the district. And so I think each and makes you. But I wanted to like hold the curtain back and kind of show you, um, what parent connections is all about. We know Ms. Kathy's all over the place. And it's about five months in now and I'm finally figuring out all the facets and corners that she touched. Um, and therefore, um, my touch. So, um, like so many at upper elementary school district, I'm, uh, head over heels with our district and if I'll go right away. And all the people working here. Um, and so, um, I'm excited today to share the vision I have for this year for the parent connections coordinator position. And the goals I'm working to sustain and some new endeavors I have for you. Um, so I have three goals. If you can go back on Mr. Cadlock, please. So these are my three goals. I'm working on empowering families. On fostering like a preschool team environment, which has grown this year a lot. And then promoting inclusion in our community. So we'll go with the first goal. So, um, these are kind of pictures from the library, um, where I do a lot of the support and empowerment of families in our district. I target, um, zero to five range, uh, for the families with that, with children in the age, the preschool age. And we have, I have a close partnership with the Mathis and Memorial Library. Um, and in order to provide, uh, better and more effective communication with our families, um, sometimes it's a big ask for them to come to the school. So it's, it's good that I go where they are and they're located. So that's their stomping grounds. In these programs, I do a lot of, um, modeling, uh, for parents. Modeling for, um, fine motor, like pre-riding skills, hold and then gross motor, which is, you know, moving our bodies. Um, if they can develop those hand muscles and that, um, tracking and vision and things like that. And the little ones, they're, they're better prepared for the first entry school. I think about there, I usually have about twenty to thirty people in attendance for my library programs, which are ongoing. Um, let's see. I have families from Elkhorn, Williams Bay, Lake Geneva, Delavan, Burlington, even Madison. So coming in and seeing what we have to offer and they come back week after week. So that's pretty cool. A lot of smiles and learning moments. We're on all sides. I'll hear when they key muster hands and using fine motor skills to push the popcorn into the fingers of the gloves and things like that. So a lot of aha moments and a lot of fun. If you can move on to the next slide. These, these are like the ongoing programs I have. So I have monthly programs, which I used to be an AP science teacher in my uh, history and also four K. So it's a good combination to put on some STEAM events. So I do like a pumpkin science. We wrote thank you notes using cabbage juice and made them appear in golden rod paper and all the sciency things that made, uh, parents excited as well as the students. Um, we did, I do an I Like to Move It, which is just growing and growing. And I do that. Um, it's such a big program now. We do it in the community room of the library. And we kind of move our bodies and, um, we read a story and then, um, we do like a healthy food, make a healthy food and the kids, we made pizza in the oven set the little bread pizzas and kids tried peppers and onions and things they maybe normally wouldn't try. So that was exciting. So those two happen once a month. And then my lapset and storytimes, baby lapset, we do a lot of bicep building with those babies and, um, kind of model storytelling with your baby. And then storytime both ended crafts and kind of some things like that. So, um, about, I average about fourteen programs a month, regular programs a month. And I stay after these programs for about a half hour and I get down on the floor with the kids and the families and play outside the story room. And that's where I think the real connections happen with those families. Um, and you get kind of those numbers shared and things like that. Social media is a great way to to say what you're doing, but it's those downtimes that we need and those personal connections where our business cards and contact information is swapped. So I feel that super important. And then my goal number two, uh, is foster a team environment among the three and four K. Um, since we adopted four K into our district, this year we have some new programs. So we have our four, three four K centers, which are Lake Bloom Learners, Step Ahead Preschool and Kitty Cottage as it's renamed this year. In addition to those, we have options for four K. Um, we've got our continued Head Start program at Jackson. We've got our Junior Elks program with Mrs. Kitts Miller. We've got our Sounds Abound and Summer School Kindergarten Come. So the scope of my kind of hug, as I like to call it, is much bigger and, um, this year. And so, it's been a learning, uh, moment with, with me, like who, who needs me and who doesn't, who would like my help? And they're all like, yes, you, you would love to have me come in. So, um, the scope has, has broadened this year. Um, let's move on to the next one. So these are some of the evening events I provide for the four K families and the outreach events. We have fitness events, like we're hosting a Punch Size Pound Fitness and we're using glow sticks and sending glow shakes for the kids. Um, we have a swim night for the four Kers. We do science events, like the fossils we're having in Milwaukee Public Museum come in, um, in April up to the library showing their fossils. Oh, I'm sorry. She's talking to you. And then, um, and then fun ones, like we had a magician come in and animals around the world. So, um, the other thing I wanted to show you is, um, in addition to these, when I have, um, a point in the school year where the students are off, for example, Thanksgiving break, I want to provide, um, supplemental enrichment for all the families. So, uh, that is done through kits. Oh, of course, I wanted my wig and up here that they wouldn't let me bring my wig. But this is an example of the kits I have. Let me pass one out. Um, so the families get these home. And basically this is the gingerbread house kit. There's a little gingerbread house, uh, basically granite crackers, food to a melt carton is your gingerbread. And then this is your supplemental material. You want to share? You can take it home and play with it. So normally, uh, whenever there's a big break, like for winter break, we'll have, we'll have a a decorative cookie decorating kit going home. We did a constellation. Oh, okay. And, um, you, there is a book included in there, uh, but you, I'm sorry, we ran out of books, so. But that's what, uh, the kit kind of involves. And then, um, sometimes I'll provide a link, like the next one, it's gingerbread. So on my um, parent connections webpage, there's like the stir bowl of gingerbread song. They can do with it and all sorts of stuff. So we try to have it interactive and some stories they can run online as well as the kit. So it goes beyond just holding your hand. Um, and also some enrichment things that parents can do. You can make cabins with them and then your gingerbread house and so on, kind of teaching those hidden things we know as teachers. And then on the last one, oops, I'm sorry. Um, this is our inclusion goal. My inclusion goal is to make sure that we're welcoming all families, um, of all shapes and sizes, of all learning abilities, of all backgrounds. And, um, in the movies, we have something called a meet cute. Where, um, it's the charming first encounter between two characters that leads to the development of a relationship between them. And so I always think of my position as creating meet cutes between the school district and our community and our families and, um, leaving with that positive first impression. Um, this is, uh, Yuki from Japan and her family came here. Her husband is kind of been an intern. At Whitewater and I think, I think she, they're brought in from like the Kiko Man plant.
Sure, sure.
And so I hunted down some of my first words from English to Japanese so that her son and Yuki could learn some of the English language. Um, and then the next day, next week, she, there's another family down from, from Japan. So it does spread like wildfire. Um, these guys are from Seeds of Hope. Um, they saw my science program with the pumpkins. And they came out of the kitchen and we were all hanging out together, um, during, uh, my science program. So not just zero to five, it's open to everyone. We haven't just turned away. Um, speaking of Seeds of Hope, we have a reading program implemented, uh, with them this year and Seeds of Hope uh, clients are coming in every other Friday to Step Ahead Preschool being reading buddies. And so both the adults and the children are learning social skills and, and gaining that confidence. Um, and then Kitty Cottage is taking on the other Fridays starting this month. And, um, so one of the other things is, uh, Mr. Cal, could you please step down there? So I always want to grow and, and, um, better myself in wherever position I'm in. This is called the Wisconsin Statewide Parent Educator Initiative. And basically it's a liaison in school districts for families who have students who have an IEP. An individual education plan or need special support in our school system. Um, so I'm taking a kind of a classes through that so that I can eventually uh, coach, uh, parents in our district. My goal is one per level, like elementary, middle and high school. So that they are kind of the go-to person. When you have a a parent whose child is identified with special needs, it's a hard road to navigate. So if we could have that parent connection there, um, I think that would better our, you know, those parents and get them started on the right foot. So that's why I'm doing that this year. Um, and then the last thing on there, um, is the Young Athletes Program. And, uh, that is something that we're kicking off spring of twenty twenty-three and, um, it's sponsored by Special Olympics. It's ages two through seven are welcome to attend. It's eight sessions and they're in all the different buildings in our district. Including Options and Lakewood. So they agreed to be part of the program. And I will kind of give you. Take a look. And I know some of you in our other meetings got this. But Katie Hoffman was such a help in getting this website up to date. So, um, it's going to go publicized in January. We're going to kick it off and then it'd be first session is in March. There are eight sessions and students can sign up for all of the sessions. Or they can sign up for one session. But if you look on the chart, it has like in blue foundational skills, walking, running, balance, jumping. And, um, those are all skills you need to play sports. Or, you know, pre-sport skills. And so if you have a child who is struggling with And so if you have a child who is struggling with bouncing and jumping, or you notice that, you can sign them up to be part of this Young Athletes Program. It's an hour long. There are stations with various activities for your students um can work on those things. And um my goal is to have half half gen ed, half special ed kids at this program. So we've got a mentoring thing going on there. Um this document right here, you can go back to the slide where we put this document, I'll review is right here. So if you need to look at all these views are links and videos and things like that. So if you want more detail, they're there. Also, there are more details on the stations inside. Um so it's pretty cool. We got all the um schools sign up for hosting at least one session. Mr. Cal, I'm sorry, could you please go back to the Young Athletes link and scroll down? Katie Hoffman was awesome. So they have, they can sign up here and they choose their session there. If you could scroll down, if you want to become a volunteer, put here and you choose your shifts there. So it's easy to do and it's easy to sign up. A medical live in January. Um that's about it, I think. Um oh, one more thing. Um we also have um through the district, um something called Child Find, where we we try to locate students um who need that extra support a- as toddlers, um so we can identify them early. But we also do a cool thing where Mr. Tablock sends out a letter to all of our newborns who are born in our district and say, welcome to our district. And then they can come pick up a birthday bag. And um also at the library every year, their parents can fill out a birthday card and they get a bag um for that age. This is age three and it comes with books. And also a part of Child Find is is meeting those milestones. This is for three-year-old milestones. So parents know if their child is on track or they might need extra services. And so those kind of things, so yeah. Well, that was a lot. So um I wanted to thank you so much. These are all very inspirational. I want to thank you for what you do for our community and helping me be that positive that will I get all my energy from you guys. So thank you.
Thank you.
I remember this program was first started by all the districts. It was shared by all the district funding and so far, it's such a different program and it's amazing what we're doing. We, I love that Elkhorn is like a trend center because we are a beacon for other districts. Williams Bay and Delavan have just started the parent connection position. They realized what an important um person, that having that person there, that connection is so important to build that bridge, that we are meeting with John Anzalone and Senta and I. We every few months with Williams Bay and Delavan, who have started these positions and we talk and we talk about all sorts of things, the way we can problem solve these in our community and reach our families better. And it's cool that we took on that mentor role. Eventually, we're hoping to maybe have like a half a day conference here where other parent connections uh personnel in the state of Wisconsin could come and learn from us and what we do. So.
I think Ms. Wessel had very big shoes to fill and I have to compliment her how she's come in, hit the road running and it's been very seamless. And I love the fact that, you know, she does a meaningful action and she's kicking them all. Does a fantastic job with it. And I remember my youngest, when I received the letter from Mr. Wester, and I had never heard of such a position for such a program. It was amazing. And you have to get the kid up there, the child of the books, the bench one, it's all that is really important. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you all very much. Welcome to the district. Uh you can come up and help me cut something out anytime. Thank you, guys. All right, now we're up to budget update and future planning discussion. You sure you want to do that tonight? After all these fun things?
I did ask Mr. Churwin just to give us a quick synopsis and an update on where that's at, what we're looking at. He presented the same slides to the administrative team. I I thought it would be good, not that this is just a report and discussion, we can put further discussion in December and in January, but I wanted to give you kind of an initial look. I thought the way this was broken down was really helpful. So, Bill, I'll turn it over to you.
As part of, I mean, this is the time of year typically after last year's budget is all is done, last year's current year's budget is finalized, they start working on the forecast model anyway. There it is, a model that we use for years. And and part of that work, um we included, you may recall last year when we were doing the ESR stakeholder engagement presentations and I kind of did around, one of the slides was kind of looking at the impact of the state budget and this anticipated fiscal plan, honestly, that we were doing decently along with the other school districts around around the state of Wisconsin. So this was a chart that I put together actually last November. And that was kind of how the numbers looked and you can kind of see the delta or the difference between total revenues and total expenses as we kind of forecasted out for twenty to twenty-five. I then updated that same chart and and as you'll see, the numbers and the delta is getting larger. So lines are changing. Well, back in November of last year, the the forecast was looking at compensation of around two and a half, three percent. Went higher in that, obviously, because of the inflation, the cost for benefits increased, everything else went up, fuel and 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 such. So all of that's impacted and quite honestly, I think probably creates more of an urgency to have maybe some more discussion about that potential operational referendum. We may want to go forward with that. So so that's kind of just a comparison of those two charts. And then what I kind of put after that is
So I think real quick, the highlight here, I think this is that next school year, the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right.
Um, you know, the difference, it's about a little over about two point seven million dollars.
Between those two, yeah. And of course, it just compounds itself with these are going future, you know, after that. And then here's the the uh election dates. And these are set by the state, basically. As you can see, every year there is a spring um election, a general election. It's not always a primary, I don't think. Is there Mrs. Fisher?
No, it depends if there's
Number of candidates for different positions, you require that, but there's always a general election in April. And then the other thing is is that the fall elections only occur on even number of years. So you can see there really is no fall election in twenty-three. There is one in twenty-four and again twenty-five, there is not twenty-six, there is no. So just to give you kind of the dates and the timetables there for the elections. This chart is just basically looking at that same forecast model. And if you kind of shift down, Jason, what I wanted to show here is how if we in fact didn't take anything to the public in terms of a referendum and if the state came in and continued with the two hundred dollar per student increase, you can see how that's affecting our operating balance, our fund balance. And basically, by the end of twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we have the stock of that fund balance.
I thought that they um they were increasing it by more than two hundred.
Well, again, this is the next budget. And we don't know what that's going to look like yet. So this is a conservative look in terms of how that potentially could look.
We do this yet that's going till late October before they get so much of it.
You never know how, you know, that's that political legislative governor process.
But Evers has proposed more than two hundred.
Okay, that's what I thought.
At the end of the day, it's
Right.
We always
Right. So putting this together is not to share with you that I think this is what's going to happen. There's a comparison piece. That's really what I wanted to add. So you can kind of see how those numbers look under that first scenario. The second scenario, basically are the same numbers, but it assumes we actually have a referendum in the spring or possibly fall of two thousand twenty-four. So when you put those numbers out there, because the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we've been into the fund balance, by the end of that next school year, which is twenty-four, twenty-five, even within a referendum of six million dollars, we would have a fund balance of about twelve percent compared to now's about twenty-four percent. So the other scenario that I put together, which is that third slide, is showing what would that look like if we looked at the same dollars, but really accelerated turn to when that referendum would be? So
So this is if we wait until twenty-three, twenty-four, the spring of twenty-three.
Twenty-four, or the fall of twenty-four. And this last chart is looking at the spring of twenty-three. And it's basically, it's it's looking at a step approach, but what it does, it shows five million in year one and another million in year two, or the same six million dollars over a two year period. And you'll see how the operating balance at the end of that time period, it's about twenty-one percent as opposed to twelve percent. And the concern that I was trying to get comparison, it's more the timing of when potentially we would go to the public and how our financial situation would look at the end of two years and then in the future. And I don't think any of us want to leave a scenario where our operating balance is so low that we can future school boards, future administrators kind of wrestling with that problem. So that's why I put together those three scenarios, which basically show no referendum. The second one shows if we went two thousand twenty-four either April or fall of twenty-four. And then the third one shows if we went in April of twenty-three. Does that make sense? We can't have
Well, of twenty-four is expensive.
Correct.
Right.
It is. So just to give kind of a sense of of how that comparison is in terms of timing. Um and then the the last piece here is really looking at what would the timetable look like from a decision standpoint if the school board decided to look at April of twenty-three? Because unfortunately, the timeframe is very narrow because of the notice requirements. And you kind of almost work that that based on the refer or the election day of April, school board would have to pass resolutions, really no error that I think technically it's the twenty-fourth, which is a two second. So then you begin to work those things back in terms of the decisions that would need to be made. The analysis becomes very short. It's doable, but also knowing with the holiday season after mid December, there isn't a lot that gets done until January.
Yeah.
Um but what we kind of laid out here from a financial analysis is really, it's some of that is some projections. So looking at, go up just a little, very little, Jason. Oh, you know, review and determine future revenue expense assumptions, because you're dealing with assumptions. So what are those bare assumptions? Um and that would include not only what we think our expenses are going to be, but what the state is going to do in terms of the state budget. And then also look at the funding kind of formula, because some districts, many districts that have gone to operational referendum and had kind of a step up approach where they got, they see the revenue cap by a certain dollars the first year and then maybe they increase it the second year, maybe they increase it the third year, so the three-year tier. Some districts have gone through the full amount in year one and just kept it at that. There's pros and cons in how you approach that. What's a decision point? The other one is is really kind of looking at, you know, what kind of offsets will we have? You know, some cash built up in our debt service fund, we could use an offset impact. And then how would that look in terms of the tax impact for our transfer? And the other big question relates to the question itself that we asked the public, and that can either be what's called a reoccurring or a non-reoccurring. Reoccurring that if it's approved, it's built in your budget definitely forever. And basically, if it's not reoccurring, that could be defined by a number of years. Like as low as two years, maybe five, ten, fifteen, or two, you could go on for whatever you want to do with that. And there's pros and cons to that approach too. So those are some of the discussions and probably decision points if that the school board is, I guess, interested in maybe pursuing that or looking at that at this time or referring it to future day. It's a lot to handle.
Well, I I don't think we we can wait. That's my personal feeling. I really think we need to go after this. I have my question um from logistics standpoint. Okay, let's say that we go ahead and referendum is successful and then the governor does something different with the funding.
It's a great question.
So I mean, what's our, what's our position there? Is that built into our overall dynamic plan?
Well, what what would happen again, what you're asking the public to do is to give the board the authority to raise the revenue cap. So if the state paying in and let's say increase funding such that here that full amount or none of that is necessary, then it becomes up to the school board to make that decision. And it could be such that, you know, it's a dollar amount and not needed the first year, you just don't do it the first year. But you would still have the authority to do it the second
So it's just giving you the authority to do it.
Correct.
Not that we require
Actually, the Elkhorn player referendum that went through the city, that there was, they didn't pull that first full amount that first year because they didn't need it.
They didn't need it, yeah.
So I mean, it has been done.
And there there used to be a penalty for underleaving. There is no longer, the way the funding formula worked, there's no longer that to underleaving if you don't need the So districts from time to time do underleave. It used to be a real, the way the aid worked.
You were stuck, you were, you were, you had to stay there. You could never go a moment unless you were to work with your children.
So if we were to try and do this in the spring, what does our timeline look like? Are digging into this as a board and
Well, it's kind of a siege. I just put in right in the converge meeting dates. So I mean, this would probably be a discussion point at a December twelfth meeting or January ninth meeting.
Okay.
I plugged in there a January sixteenth workshop. I don't know if that would be necessary.
Great. No, that's great.
Yeah. But by the twenty-third, I mean, at that meeting technically, pretty much would be a consensus of the board on what we want to do.
Yeah.
Because if you two resolutions, you'd be approving that evening, that one would be calling for the referendum and the second one would be the question of the referendum.
Right, yeah.
And those would be already be prepared to bond council.
Right.
So at that point, it isn't really talking about what should we do, but should, that should have been occurred previous to the twenty-third. So you're correct, I think, is that it's a lot of information and what to do in the short time period.
Right.
You know, technically, we've done that before.
And yeah, we did.
It means that you're
Yeah, we did that with the office.
I pushed it and said, we don't want to wait till the number for that.
I tend to agree with Ed. I think if we're going to do this, we need to, we need to do this this spring.
Well, you know, for whatever reason, if it wouldn't pass, then we have another
Then we have another year.
To educate and do it over a longer period of time.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't want to count on that, but
Right. But you don't want to push it out to twenty-three, twenty-four and then not have that pass. And now we're two years out.
I mean, this is my tenth year in the school district and every year since I've been here, on an annual basis, we go into the next year looking at about a million dollar, you know, eight hundred thousand, a million dollar shortfall.
Yeah.
We've been very fortunate that our revenues increased
Yeah.
through the open enrollment and that program expansion where over the last ten years, you know, we were at about six million dollars in gross revenue through that open enrollment program, which has helped us not have those shortfalls year after year after year. And we've maintained that tight budget to the point where we are at a twenty-five percent fund balance and the first time these, the bill can recall, where we haven't had to do a credit line or short-term borrow.
Yeah.
And I, I don't think that would be responsible, us to wipe half of that
Yeah.
fund balance out guaranteed and then rely on that question of year.
Yeah, I agree.
I would hate to see us in that position. Because no matter what would happen, we know we would be back into having to cash flow borrow if we had credit.
So Bill, you're, you're projecting that we're going to be down thirty-eight students next year, huh?
Well, in terms of our resident membership, we are down thirty-eight students this year.
Oh.
Yeah. And we were down sixty-four the year before, so about a hundred students over the last two.
Our overall head count is up because of the open enrollment, but our revenue limits set by that resident population.
Because we are, yeah, the city is growing, right?
Which, which
Yeah, because I was looking at the revenue cap and I'm like, oh, it's not
It's not going up, is it?
No.
It's going down. And if you look at those numbers, there's a whole harmless component there of eight, nine hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And the reason that's there is, is it provides kind of a parachute for school districts that are in the declining enrollment.
But then it's like cut in half next year.
Yeah.
Why is that?
Because it's comparing to the next year's budget and the whole harmless as a calculation out of the three-year average. So as our three-year average starts going down, the amount of that whole harmless starts going down at every single one.
Yeah, yeah. The sooner we actually get that, the higher the number gets. That's kind of what happens to our neighbors to the south when they had that declining enrollment, you know, and Lake Geneva had to lay out dozens of teachers. And same with Elven.
Yeah, with the programs, you know.
But we don't have a reduced head count. They have reduced head count.
Yeah.
So we do have that open enrollment offsetting that or easing that pain into declining enrollment would be a nice thing.
And realistically, I don't know if we can assume that open enrollment is going to go up to that kid behind every single
We've, I've been expecting it to plateau at some point. Um, so we'll put it on the December twelfth agenda. I think I saw some head nodding related to possibly maybe doing a separate workshop where we just focus on that maybe. I, I'm a little nervous about it being just January sixteenth, but maybe we can have the
The only reason I put that date is it was
It's a Monday, yeah.
It was a Monday night, but
But then maybe something we can, uh, yeah, maybe Jody put all the doodle and fill that out from a straw poll. It makes sense just to have a separate meeting just to tackle that. Uh, we don't have to wait until January twenty-third. You know, but with December, the way it is, we just have the one meeting and thinking probably a retreat towards that. Maybe it is January sixteen. All right, any other questions related to this?
No, I would just say, Jason, that, you know, I, I don't think anyone's been a bigger advocate for wait and see than me, especially on budgetary items, because it's so unknown as to what we're going to see, you know, from the legislature, from the governor in any given year. But when we look at these numbers, that, you know, when we were at one point seven million deficit, I wasn't too worried because like you said, we could, you know, make up a million dollars. I've seen that done many times, you know, through various methods throughout the year. But when we're looking at four million and eight mil, or seven and a half million dollars, um, it takes a long time to build up that money into a fund balance. And if we were to just deplete that money, um, it could take a decade to build that back up. I mean, to be honest. So I think that'd be very dangerous to wait at this point.
I think it's easier just to educate the public too of what the last two years have been.
Yeah.
Because we're all there.
Right.
Not just the school.
Right.
Um, so I think it's easier to say, we've been fiscally, you know, responsible and, um, we just need to be prepared for the next couple of years of life. And, um, I think it's an easier time to educate people right now than if maybe a year, two years now.
Yeah, it's still fresh in their minds and
Yeah, no, we've all feeling the impact of it and
Well, and make no doubt that these, these recurring referendums, they hit people's budget or people's pocketbooks a lot harder than the, you know, the debt service referendum. So it's going to be a bigger bite for them to, you know, to swallow because, you know, Elkhorn, I don't think, I don't remember Elkhorn ever doing a recurring referendum um, that I can think of. I don't know, maybe Bill remembers one, but I certainly don't. Um, there's going to be a lot of education that needs to be done to, to get this to pass. And I think, you know, we can do that and we certainly have the channels to get that done, so.
Two dollars or two years of zero dollar revenue limit increases with record high inflation.
Right, and, and costs of everything is, you know, I, I don't
Well, this little bit of food budget, right? You're really on one point seven in two years?
Yeah, at least, at least the state budget is at a record high. This first
Well, I was just going to say, I
Yeah.
I just They're projecting a six million dollar
Well, yeah, that's what happens when you give schools free zero dollars for
Miss swallowed the Esther funds.
Yeah, but at least the revenue collection, I mean, it would be much worse if the state was looking at a if they were having a deficit too.
Right.
Yeah.
And it would be
But I think, you know, when we're looking at a budget that, you know, and that's what we have to educate the public on, is when we're looking at a budget that includes high seventies to low eighty percent salary and benefits, you know, what we're, what we're talking here is if we can't, you know, balance this budget, we can't get closer to that number through a referendum, never, we're going to be looking at cutting programs or raising class sizes. Two things that I don't think most people want, you know, especially class sizes rising anymore. I've already heard complaints on that, so we wouldn't want that to get any worse. But the only way to really balance that is to, is to cut staff if it comes down to it. So that's the educational component that we need to get across, that we need to get this, we need to get this passed so that we don't have that issue. If the state were to give us a bunch of funds, then great, then maybe we don't need all that money. But chances are that, you know, Bill's estimate, which is usually pretty good, is probably relatively close. And maybe it's not exact, but it'll be, I'm sure it'll be relatively close. He's pretty good at that.
All right, we'll work on getting some dates and pinning that down.
To recommendations of the district administrator personnel.
All right, the personnel sheet is attached. I want to thank Lindsay Yost has accepted a position out on the East Coast and she'll be staying with us through the holiday break. And I want to wish her well. She's, I know, had Miles, this one, he came over, he was her first teacher here. We have the resignation of Christine Mitchell, Jacob Houston, and Brian Squares as the athletic coach and then the support staff positions are all listed there. We have the appointments of Drew Nicholson, Robert Bedeau, and Jared Hatston as this, as coaches. That's all I have for the personnel sheet.
To approve these, we need a motion.
I move to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, including new employment contracts, conditions on passing background check in district, mandated drug screening as presented.
We have a second?
Okay.
We moved to approve the personnel recommendation sheet as presented, with the stipulations as presented. Roll call, both please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you. We do have some school gifts this evening.
Unless we've got two school gifts this evening. And our first one is the Donald Henderson donated a thousand dollars to the Snack in the Pack program. That's a program that Senta Holmes has been spearheading and working with. And she was also able to secure donation from the Tunis Auto Group, who donated ten thousand dollars to the Snack in the Pack program. This is where they pack children's backpacks for the weekend to make sure that they've got food over the weekend. Um, so I want to thank both the Hendersons and Tunis Automotive. They have, I think, sent up for working with them and getting those donations.
We need to accept these? Do we have a motion?
I move to accept the generous gift as presented.
Second.
Second.
So a motion to accept them as presented, roll call, both please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Ben Alm?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Do you have any announcements this evening?
Um, no, I don't have any formal announcements. I did include an article on the board notes related to school referendums in the state of Wisconsin, which I thought gave a pretty comprehensive analysis of the numbers from around the state that was in the last. Great, but that's all I have.
Do, do, we, we need a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion here.
There was third already here. Roll call, both.
But who is my second?
I'm Jen.
Yeah, all right.
You know what's the third?
I love her.
Uh, I'll give the third. All right. Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Alm?
Yes.
Hey?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton? Ms. Williams?
Motion is carried.